I want to tell you how this is going to work tonight, okay? I'm sure it won't go off smoothly as we would like. But the races tonight that we are going to feature are the city commissioners, seats one and two, supervisor of elections, and the sheriff. The questions that will be asked to the candidates have been prepared by the League of Women Voters in coordination with our sponsors. Some questions are intended to be answered by each candidate. However, there will be additional questions that only one candidate will be asked to address because we hope to cover a variety of topics and we don't have time for each candidate to respond to every topic. We have three-by-five cards and pencils that are in the back of the room. If you need to ask a question, we will be taking questions from the audience and screening them and then asking those that we can find time to get in. If you would like a card, please raise your hand and one will be delivered to you when you've completed your card. Please raise your hand with the card in it and we'll collect them and bring them up to the front. At this time, each candidate will be given two minutes to answer each question and we'll give, we'll be giving them warnings when the time remaining is one minute, 30 seconds, and 15 seconds. So that's how we hope it'll run. I now have the pleasure of introducing Skip Foster, who will act as our moderator tonight. He's president and publisher of the Tallahassee Democrat. And many of you don't do know Skip, but if you haven't had an opportunity to meet him, we think his newspaper's doing a fine job of covering all the elections and the races and making it clear to folks how things operate, even though it's a very confusing election season. Thank you, Skip, for being here, and I think we'll go ahead and get started.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates. Good to be here. Can you hear me well out there? It's usually not a problem. Okay, so we're going to get started here today. We'll start on my left with Mr. Maddox. And these, again, are questions prepared by the League. They've given me a little bit of, about this much rope to go off of script, so we'll see how that goes. I could maybe get my head through there if I really squeezed hard enough. So, starting with Mr. Maddox, how can we, how should we direct resources from the CRA to areas like Frenchtown and the South Side to enhance economic development in those areas? How should that work?
Thank you. First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on. I love to see civic engagement and I greatly appreciate it. And I want to introduce my wife Shay, who's in the back, and my son Jack, and thank them for coming. How the CRA can help with Frenchtown-South Side? So there are two CRAs, the Downtown CRA and Frenchtown-South Side CRA. I believe that the best mechanism for the CRA for improvement in Frenchtown-South Side is to use infrastructure to change and spur development. We saw that happen on Gain Street, all the way up and down, where we started out with, when Commissioner Lightsey and I voted on Gain Street in the '90s, it was a brownfield site and anchored on one end by warehouses and the other end by an EPA Superfund site that is now Cascades Park. When you started spending CRA dollars to acquire property and to change by putting in infrastructure, streetscape, stormwater, lighting, then you saw the private sector catch up and start to develop along those lines. Now, that area's caught fire. It is my great hope that that will happen in Frenchtown and South Side, and I think it is already happening. If you look at the change that has happened over the last 20 years in Frenchtown, it has been significant. When you look at the change that is about to happen on South Monroe and South Adams, I think that we are right on the cusp of those two areas taking off like we've seen Gain Street take off.
Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Thank you for having me. I think one of the best ways to use that, the CRA, is essentially to form partnerships and develop partnerships with the local community, local businesses, to continue to push the ideas they're already using to reach the community. Focus on rehabilitating, you know, housing the neighborhoods, help develop the community pride. That strengthens the economy. Focus on job-creating resources, like creating transit, further developing transit to connect homes to jobs, make it easier for people to get to work. And essentially, one of the notes I had, excuse me, was to focus on the local, the local business and empowering them to make the neighborhoods better. Help, help them to develop and grow from within versus reaching outside to these outside developers. I talked about favoring local businesses last time, and I was told that's not constitutional, but a quick search of our charter shows that we actually already have an ordinance that favors local business. So I would push that and make sure that we're in the community, not just telling them the best way to go forward, so.
Mr. Struble?
Thank you for having me, everyone. Thank you for coming out. I think both my colleagues here, Mr. Maddox and Mr. Lee, are both right in what they're saying, and I think it's got to be a comprehensive approach. We do need to develop infrastructure in the areas where it's most needed. I've been a strong proponent of this idea of equitable development, and I think that's something that the CRA can assist with. Furthermore, I think it's important that we invest in community development, and that's also something that the CRA does with the special, special events grant. I would like to see that program expanded as well. And I think through a combination of both activities, developing the infrastructure, supporting the businesses that are already in place, and also revitalizing the area, we need to address the blight in those communities specifically so that people have a sense of morale and they feel a sense of pride and they're more willing to invest in the community where they reside. And I think if we attack it from that perspective, then we could get the most out of what the CRA is intended to do.
By the way, CRA Community Redevelopment Agency. I've already been put in moderator timeout, and it's just the first question. I didn't, I didn't read that out like I was supposed to, so I apologize. And everybody, just talk among yourselves for a few seconds. Well, no, I'm kidding. Starting this one with Mr. Lee, would you support the city's involvement in expanding our internet infrastructure to attract high-tech businesses?
I think that's a wonderful idea. My big focus is to look at how the city spends money in general, to see where, where we would get the money to, you know, to focus on that. And to make sure we're not pulling away from other vital programs just to give internet, you know, high-speed internet downtown. I think it's a great idea, as long as we're not going to burden the taxpayers and ask for more increase in property tax and all of these different areas where we try to find money. I think the first thing we should do is focus on reducing spending, and then we look at, okay, where can we put this, the money now? And I think, yeah, it's a great idea. I would support it, but, but not blindly. I would make sure that I'm reviewing, are we saving money in other areas so that we can do this program without burdening taxpayers?
Mr. Struble?
Absolutely. This is something that's very important in terms of economic development. People need access to the internet. Businesses are going to need internet access, and it's going to help improve our economy and stabilize it as well. So it's very important. I think there are tax-neutral ways to do it. We already have funding coming in, and I don't think it'll be necessary to ask for additional funding to do so. We just have to make sure that we're not, I would like to say, we want to make sure that it's done in a fair process. You want to make sure that the contracts given out in this infrastructure development are not going to specific people who are friends of high-ranking officials. So the key is to make sure it's done fairly, it's done equitably, and that everyone has access to it. But I definitely would support developing our internet infrastructure.
Okay. Mr. Maddox?
Think of how far technology has come in such a short period of time. I remember the city's IT director, Michael Napolow, standing where the moderator is standing today, addressing, when I first came on the commission in 1993, saying that there's something coming called the World Wide Web, and we'll all have email soon. And today, look at what we can do at our fingertips. When I was a kid growing up, my only source of knowledge was a public library, and my mother and grandmother would bring us once a week to the public library. Well, you got what you got in school, or the library, or Encyclopedia Britannica. And the younger people here are saying, what's that? Right? Well, today, this is the great equalizer. So kids throughout Tallahassee, if they're given access to technology and the internet, can travel the world, their imagination can see every corner of the universe with their fingertips. All they need is access. If we can provide them access like we have in the downtown area, like we have at Cascades Park, like we have at the airport, if we can provide them access everywhere, I want to do it.
Okay. Staying on the internet and the digital realm, would you support, Mr. Struble, expanding Tallahassee's digital canopy to lower-income neighborhoods, especially those with schools in the area, within the next year or so? Why or why not, and how would you do it?
I do support this, but I want to say it's partial. What I don't want is the city providing universal internet for the entire city. I think we could do this more strategically. As we've reviewed this with some of my team, what we discussed was possibly putting it in strategic locations, the digital canopy hotspots in strategic locations, perhaps at all the public parks that are run by the city, and maybe our public housing facilities as well, just to make sure that we have internet in the areas where it's needed most, without, at the same time, having to shoulder the burden of providing universal Wi-Fi access for everyone. Because some people could afford it on their own, they won't need it. Some people won't feel the willingness to use, I guess what we call, public Wi-Fi. So I think the, I think it would be important to make sure it's in strategic locations.
Okay. Mr. Maddox?
Yes. For the reasons that I just articulated before, we, this technology is getting cheaper and cheaper and cheaper. So if we can provide it in areas where children, especially, and students don't have access to it, as well as adults, because today, just about everything that you want to do has to be done over the internet. There's very few things that are left that you can do in person or by mail. So if we can somehow spend a little bit of resources to expand it to areas that don't have it today, and to get beyond that digital divide, I think it's a good thing.
Okay. Mr. Lee?
And I agree with Dr. Struble and Commissioner Maddox. It's, it is absolutely a good thing, but like I said earlier, you have to make sure we're spending responsibly. I like the idea of having a strategy in place to where we're going to make it available. Again, as long as we're not taking away from other vital sources and just unnecessarily raising taxes to cover costs, I think it's a great idea and absolutely would support it.
Okay. Great. So let's see, we're starting with Mr. Maddox. No, let's see. He finished, one, two, three. Yeah, yeah, don't mess me up now. I had it right. What kind of zoning would you support to allow group homes for persons with special needs and/or housing for our homeless population within the city limits so that people may more easily access those services that they need and are available to them?
We don't discriminate in our zoning, so there is no discrimination in our zoning that says you can't have, homeless people can't live here. There's no economic test for a person to live in any area. When you have group homes and larger things, those are allowed in certain zoning categories, which are pretty much, lots of access in the city of Tallahassee and the county. Our comprehensive plan is extremely inclusive, so I am unaware of a problem where we've had folks turned down from living based on their socioeconomic status.
Okay. Mr. Lee?
I imagine that question kind of arises from the tiny house issue that was going on on the north side, and if I'm looking at that, I like the idea, you know, what Commissioner Maddox said is we don't discriminate. I think because we already have a problem putting everybody in categories based on, you know, socioeconomic factors, race, color, creed, I mean, we, we already divide enough. So you have to make sure you're, that your housing, your zoning laws don't box certain people out just because they may not be able to afford the type of home that you want. And so that's something I would have to take a really good look at. I get the, you know, people have neighborhoods that want them to look a certain way, and they desire a certain feel, a certain charm that makes that part of Tallahassee that part of Tallahassee, but you can't, you know, you don't want a Walmart in the middle of Southwood, for example. But on the, on the flip side of that, you can't tell people where they can't build a house just because you don't like the way they look, the way they dress, or whatever the case may be. So that's something I have to take a really close look at and make sure we're not discriminating.
Okay. Mr. Struble?
Yeah, I'm a strong supporter of inclusionary zoning, and it just simply means that what we do is as we have new developments come in, we also have requirements to make sure that we're allotting for spaces that would contain either our homeless shelters or assisted living facilities. We just want to make sure that everyone feels included, and we don't want to have any ordinances or any activities that push undue burdens on our already most impacted populations. So we know that we have roughly, at any given time, 800 to 1,000 homeless individuals in the city of Tallahassee. We know that about 36 to 40% of them are going to be disabled. Lots of them are military veterans, about somewhere between 59 to 61% are African-Americans. So we definitely want to make sure that we have shelters and spaces in, in place that we could assist people in need. A lot of times, people get the wrong idea about our homeless population. They think that they're all people who've just given up, or people who aren't trying to work, but a lot of times, these are people who need help. So we definitely want to make sure that we have spaces for them, and we want to make sure that the zoning is inclusive so that we could put them in areas where they have access to the resources they need throughout the city.
All right. Mr. Maddox?
I did that one, all right.
You did that one?
Yes, sir. I can do it again.
Let's just go, let's keep going on that one. I really like that. All right, so other candidates, take note, our timer that's supposed to be holding things up is bored because they're zipping through the answers, doing a great job, so let's just take note of that, keep that in mind, okay? We're going to keep asking a few of these for all of the candidates because they are moving through their answers so expeditiously. Mr. Lee, what are your plans to make Tallahassee a city that promotes sustainability and green energy?
The biggest thing, I think, is to surround yourself with the people that know best. So you get in the community, you find, you know, your scientists, people that are already doing these things, and don't try to reinvent the wheel, focus on renewable energy sources, focus on, you know, like the digital canopy, going, going green everywhere we can. But the key to that is, I'm not a scientist, so I have to look at and rely on the knowledge of people that are already in this field and have the years of experience, and to really listen to the voice of the community to see what is the best way forward, to make sure we're, we're absolutely addressing that.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it's important to incentivize the behaviors that we would like to see from our community. So one thing that I've been working on is trying to find ways that we could incentivize our local businesses and homeowners as well to participate in environmentally friendly and activities that don't have a negative impact on our environment. So I know that, for example, they recently voted to remove the business tax at the urging of the Chamber of Commerce. I thought something we could have did different instead of that was, instead of removing it completely, we could have done exemptions for companies that agreed to participate in the environmental stewardship activity. So if your company was willing to, for example, have their employees share rides or move away from plastic bags, just simple things like that, then we could waive the business tax. There's other ways we could provide incentives through property tax abatement for our larger companies, or simply just making sure that there is a financial incentive, or even some kind of city-sponsored program that will allow you to participate in this without incurring too much cost or burden on your own time.
Okay. All right. Mr. Maddox?
Thank you. Unfortunately, the state statute wouldn't allow exemptions on the business tax, but I think that's a good idea to incentivize environmental stewardship. The, the city of Tallahassee has always been a leader with renewable energy because this utility is owned by you, not by investors, not by shareholders. So the city has continuously, more than once, voted against having coal as a fuel source. We have combined-cycle units that are clean natural gas and are much better environmentally than coal. We also have had hydro for years and years at the Talquin Dam, and additionally, we just got to go ahead to put a solar farm at our airport that will give us at least 2% of our load, will be taken care of through solar. So we've always had a commitment to renewable energy, and it only makes good dollars and cents. We also work on the demand side as well. The neighborhood reach program allows people in neighborhoods, we come in and weatherize homes, replace windows, put in insulation, many times for folks that can't afford to do that on their own. So we're making sure that on the demand side, we're as clean as we are and want to be on the production side.
That was an audience question, by the way, and here's another, and I believe we're on Mr. Struble. We have a lot of economic development happening around Gain Street, but less than a mile south, we have a community in ruin. What will you do to bring economic development to this South Side community?
Again, this starts with incentives, and it starts with leadership from the city commission. I think it's important that we incentivize development in the areas where it's needed. One thing we see happening throughout Tallahassee is unequitable development. We keep building in areas where there's already stuff, and then we have areas not more than a couple of miles down the road where there is empty building after empty building. So we have to focus in those areas, and I think it's important to sweeten the deal to our developers to say, hey, we have this area right here, and we're willing to work with you to come into this side of our town. And I think it's something that will benefit all of us, not just the people living in that immediate area, but it allows us to address the blight. Addressing the blight allows us to address the crime that's associated with it and the unemployment that's associated with the crime. So it allows us to attack multiple issues by simply focusing on developing in a balanced and equitable manner.
Mr. Maddox?
That's precisely what the CRAs do. They use tax increment financing to spur development in areas that have blight and need that extra push. Gain Street is a perfect example of what was blighted and is not today. We have to be a willing partner with the market. It's, it's very difficult to try to force-feed the free-market system. So the CRA gives us an opportunity to use tax increment financing to put in the infrastructure needs that developers need, enable to, for them to develop for, for less money and more efficiently. So I think we already have the mechanism in place to make those changes.
Mr. Lee?
I think what a lot of people just kind of tend to ignore, once you get into leadership with city commission and local governments in general, when the transparency's lacking and people have the perception that there's, you know, inside deals going on and certain developers are getting favored to develop in certain places that may appear to bring better business to them and that they don't really care about the community as much as they care about turning a profit, you end up in a situation like we have, you know, being described as the most financially segregated city in the country. Anyone that lives here can obviously see just what that question said. If you stand right at the Capitol and look right down Monroe Street, you know, it's a whole different city from when you look to the left down Monroe Street and head north. The way to start fixing that is to, to put the resources back in the hands of local developers, your, your local communities. You get involved with these nonprofits that are already out here trying to fix things, are already working with local businesses to, you know, fix the facades and pick up the trash, and to make it an area where you want to develop, where you want to grow, where you want to do business. And then you look at, what, what are we allowing the developers to do, or what are we not doing to bring them in? And I think, again, going back to favoring the local business, there's ways to incentivize it, like Dr. Struble said, and I think hearing what the community says is the biggest problem. We have no idea how to address what we don't know is going on. We can sit here and say what's good for it, but unless we're in the community, involved, talking to the business owners, talking to the neighborhoods, you know, making it about people and not about what we think should be best done for a certain Frenchtown and South Side, that sounds good, but if you don't know anybody over there and you don't talk to anybody over there, you really don't have a clue on how to fix anything. So you have to get back into the community, get involved, and then you start making the changes that way.
Okay. Mr. Maddox, what improvements would you make to Star Metro and other public transportation programs in Tallahassee?
Star Metro's come a long way. I have a difficult time not calling it Tau Train because that's what I'm used to. But I came, when I came on the commission, back on the commission four years ago, I specifically pushed for bus shelters and bus benches. To me, it was unconscionable that in the capital city of the third-largest state, that we have children waiting in the rain, that we have senior citizens sitting on the ground and sitting in the hot sun. So I pushed very hard for shelters, and we've gotten those now, a great many more than we had previously. The route system has settled down now. It went through a series of changes where people were dissatisfied because of the constant change, and it's settled down now. The rhythm route is working, the trolley system is working, so I'm pleased overall with Star Metro.
Okay. Mr. Lee?
I mean, basically, as someone who's used City Bus for a lot of my time here in Tallahassee, I am happy to see Star Metro moving the direction they're moving. One of the big problems I see, though, for example, is, and I think the city commission's already addressing it, so, you know, props to you guys for, for that, is allowing the high school students to ride for free. I think that's a great step forward and opening it up to college, to the college kids, and even discounts to the elderly, disabled. I think one of the big problems, though, is we're not focused on the people. Yeah, we're going to let high school students ride for free, but the bus route stops before you can even get the child, so what is that student going to do if he wants to go to the school of their choice? You know, good luck, catch a ride from, from Radfordville on out, I guess, is what you're supposed to do. But focus on the people, make sure we're doing, they did a big town hall for them before they made the route changes and removed the central location as a, as the stop for everybody. I thought that was a, a great idea to get the feedback from the community, but to constantly monitor it and make sure we're serving the people that it's designed to serve, that's what I would push for. Keep it transparent and keep everybody involved in the decision-making process.
Okay. Mr. Struble?
I agree with what both my colleagues said, and another thing, I think I've heard a lot of my constituents say that they would like to see the bus routes run later. And I think one way that could be done is maybe with an increased fee for rides at a certain time or after a certain point in the day, if it's going, if that's going to help make it neutral on the budget. Because what we don't want to happen is that we have to, we have to pay, or we have to raise taxes to pay for it. So I think the best way to do it would be to somehow look and see how we could increase the fee so that people who need to ride later, possibly, if that works, or we could find whatever the best strategy is to extend the bus times that they're running, because right now, when they're cutting off, our individuals who are late workers are finding it hard to get home. So we do have to address that.
Okay. We're zipping right along here and have some more questions from the audience. This was a little long, but it's a good one. In May, the city commission chose not to vote on a proposal from the Community Leadership Council, this is for you, Mr. Lee, on gun crime. This was aimed at treating gun violence using a public health model, an approach recently endorsed by the CDC. Due to the 15% increase in the crime rate just last year, do you endorse this decision? What do you suggest as an alternative?
I think the city commission really dropped the ball on that. Having participated in the gun violence forums and seen the model, seen what they were providing, knowing a couple of the, even the young lady that was running earlier in the race, Ms. Pugh, was a strong leader in that arena. They're treating gun violence like a, like a health disease and addressing it from a control, from keeping it from spreading, addressing it in, in ground zero and taking the, you know, necessary measures to fix. I think it was a great model. People get a little nervous because it comes from the Chicago area, and they go, oh, you know, Chicago's not the best model for, you know, gun violence reduction. But it's, it's not in Chicago, it's the surrounding areas, and it's been used all over the country in various models. It's a great program, and I don't, I don't think the city really served the interests of the citizens when they, when they voted not to participate in that. But I, from what I understand, it's still on the table. It just wasn't done then, so I think they really need to pick that up and move with it.
I don't think this is an issue we could afford to wait on. I'm an individual myself who lost a close, a very close friend to gun violence here in Tallahassee. She was murdered right at what used to be the Prince Motel, and I think that the longer we wait, you know, then it starts to become more of a problem. So I don't think this is something that we could be hesitant on. Sometimes you're put in a situation where you have to make tough decisions, we have to look at the cost of this program, how effective it's been in other places, and if it's proven to work, then we, we can go for it. Another thing I would like to see is possibly if we could get the city to fund, some fund programs and do a request for proposals to see if we could get research-based models that could address the, the root causes of the crime that we see here in Tallahassee, particularly the violent crime and gun crimes. What we want to look at is what are organizations that we already have here? We have several nonprofits, several church organizations that are already working on this issue, and if we could provide them additional support, and if they could show us a research-based model, we should be willing to put resources in their hands and see if they could address it.
Mr. Maddox?
I'm against the details within the program. So it's gotten mixed reviews from different places around the country, whether it works or not. Of course, I think all of us agree that we've got to tackle our violent crime problem. I was a strong supporter of additional law enforcement officers on the street and a strong supporter of community, of a community school on the South Side, which I think goes to prevention and the root cause. I'm also a strong supporter of community policing. The Cure Violence Model, however... a strong supporter of community policing. The Cure Violence Model, however, takes people that are in the community that will act as a buffer in between violence to keep it from happening. So before, they'll be paid by the city. It's an annual cost of about approximately $300,000 a year. They'll be paid by the city, and they will be there to act as a buffer in violence. Well, I'm concerned with liability. So the city, I mean, most of, a lot, a very lot of our crime happens in between drug deals or in a club or outside a club in the wee hours. So we're going to put a city employee in between a drug deal and say, now, wait a minute, you, you offered to pay X, but you didn't pay Y, and so don't get mad and shoot one another. I mean, we've got a liability issue then when we put somebody in that situation. And so because of that, I'm not in favor of it.
Okay, we've got Mr. Strobel vigorously shaking his head. We're going to allow for a little inter, interaction here.
Commissioner Maddox is mischaracterizing the program. It doesn't take a city employee and say, you go and intervene in a drug deal. What it does is it allows citizens to be more involved in their community, and they act as liaisons with your local officers. They interact with the people who they know, and they try to do crime prevention. If an actual crime is going on, they're trained to identify the criminals and report it to the police officers. So we have to be careful with how we characterize this program. And again, it has been effective in some places, but it's not going to have universal effectiveness across the board. But what you do is you adjust it to your, your locale and what's going on in your city.
Sure, Mr. Lee?
It speaks to, again, leadership being out of touch with the community. What, the people that he's talking about being paid city employees or what they call a credible source, anybody that grew up in any neighborhood knows there's always somebody in that neighborhood that you can talk to, that you can go to when you have issues. So they develop a mentoring program essentially between these credible sources and the local neighborhood hothead or the local neighborhood, you know, bad boy, or whatever it may be. And they, they figure out ways to teach them anger management. They have an office hour that's pretty much all the time. I don't believe the cost is 300,000. I'll double check. They were asking for 75 to get it started, but, you know, that's one other issue. But it's not, when you're out of touch with the community, yeah, it's real easy to say, let's give a guy a clipboard, put him on a salary, and send him to get slaughtered. That's not how it works at all. It's, it's, you get a credible source, somebody that knows the community, knows the people, knows before the violence. Everybody knows when rumors start and there's an issue that's going to happen, somebody knows about it before the violence usually happens. It's not all drug deals and outside of club shootings. That's absolutely absurd.
Okay. Mr. Maddox, give you a last response there?
Sure. Well, unfortunately, I'm encumbered with a law degree. You hate to have to admit that in a crowd full of regular folks, everyone hates lawyers. But we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in settlements in this government recently. This credible source that they're talking about will be paid by the city of Tallahassee. They will be, and when, when they're paid by the city of Tallahassee, you take on the liability what you put that person out to do. Just like if you're a swim coach or a tennis coach, or a Parks and Recreation person, or an electric lineman, you, you get that liability. So that is the annual cost, but I'm more concerned with something happening down the line that gives the city of Tallahassee a giant liability hit and a lawsuit hit. Again, I believe strongly that we need to tackle the problem. I'm just not sure that this program is the way to do it, and there's probably better ways to spend that much money on an annual basis.
Okay, moving forward. Mr. Strobel, this question's for you. How do you propose to find balance between encouraging growth in Tallahassee and saving existing canopy roads and other environmental concerns?
Excellent question. I think it's very important, first and foremost, that we look at the review from the Canopy Roads Citizen Committee. I was reading their last final report that they put out, and they make great recommendations. They let us know when we are going too far with removing trees. They let us know the environmental impacts of a lot of developments that are going to take place, and that has to be considered. It's a part of the culture of Tallahassee, it's a part of Tallahassee's history to protect our trees and keep the city green. And that has to be, any commissioner, that has to be something that is one of your priorities. So in terms of balance, we have to look at the impact, we have to look at the good of the development for all citizens and how we're going to benefit from it, and is it worth what we're going to lose in terms of our sustainability and our trees?
Do you think we have it in right balance right now?
I think that the city is working in the right direction.
Okay. So where is the balance tilt right now, do you think? Towards the environment or towards growth?
I think right now, we are leaning towards, we're leaning towards growth, but then we still have in place what's necessary to make sure that we don't go too far. So I think that there's always room for improvement. So I don't want to, I don't want to say that we're going in the wrong direction. I just want to say this is an area we need to pay special attention to.
Okay. Mr. Maddox?
I love our canopy roads. I grew up on a canopy road here. And, you know, when Andrew Jackson became the territorial governor of Florida, he was a horrible governor and he hated Florida. And he didn't spend very much time here, but his, his Colonel Robert Butler spent a lot of time here, and he was the first survey general of the state of Florida. And he set the prime meridian marker at Cascades Park, what is now Cascades Park. And that is the prime spot from which every survey in the state of Florida, from Key West to Pensacola, the numbers from their survey emanate from that spot. He put a meridian that went north-south and a baseline that went east-west. The baseline, he cut a road and named it after his boss, and that's Jackson Bluff Road today. And the north-south meridian is Meridian Road. We have had canopy roads that long. They're a great part of Tallahassee. I think the way to preserve them is, number one, remain vigilant and not allow cuts in them. Number two, create roads on either side, north-south roads or east-west roads, depending on the canopy. We have great opportunity with the Phipps property, what just happened with the new toll road. We'll have another opportunity, I'm sure, at some point, as one landowner has north-south area, and in the Wallani area to do the same, to take traffic off those roads so we can sustain them in the long term.
And where do you think we are in the balance right now between growth?
I think we're very good with preservation. The Canopy Roads Committee was a Leon County issue, but I, it's straightened out, and I believe we're, we're right in balance.
Okay, Mr. Lee?
No, I agree. We need to protect the canopy roads. As far as where we stand, I'm a little worried when you see, if you've been down Spring Hill Road towards the airport, you know, that whole, I don't even know how many acres is leveled now. I would, I'd be more concerned with responsible development. We're getting ready to clear a huge tract of land out tram road and Capital Circle because the county wants to build another high school. There's not really much justification for the need. You know, things like that worry me, that we're not doing the best job to protect canopy roads, protect the environment. So I would be hesitant to say we're doing great. I think, like what Dr. Strobel said, we're moving in the right direction. I just, I would be more concerned with sensible development to where we are, making sure to protect our canopy roads. I mean, they get all kinds of awards, any biking magazine, you know, Car and Driver Magazine, there, there are all kinds of awards for these beautiful roads. So, yeah, we need to protect them and grow sensibly.
Okay, last question, starting with you, Mr. Maddox. How can the city deal with blighted properties held by either speculative landowners or owners that have no interest in restoring them?
Code enforcement. And that, that's a problem. It's a continued problem with, and our code enforcement folks work very hard to put fines and fees on folks that aren't developing their property. And if you make any kind of a good faith effort, they'll, they'll allow you, the code enforcement board will grant you the ability to move forward without the fines if you'll improve your property. But it's a consistent problem. The best thing we can do is continue to have smart, sustainable growth within the urban service area, focusing our growth, growth in our urban core. And as more growth continues, it'll continue to creep out. You're seeing sensible development now in places that you didn't see it before 10 years ago. I think if we continue doing that job well, the blight problem will take care of itself.
Okay, Mr. Lee?
No, that's actually a great point. I think having worked hand-in-hand with a lot of friends and family in French Town, trying to fix, there's, there's people in the community that actually will go to these abandoned houses and try to do whatever repairs they can without media attention, without the funds, because they do care about the neighborhood. So code enforcement helps for sure, but I think we need to take that step back and try to prevent these things from happening. You know, focus on sensible development, focus on making sure the right, the right type of development is happening in these communities where blight is most present. And just staying focused on preventing these problems from happening, I think is the biggest concern.
Mr. Strobel?
Code enforcement is perhaps the best mechanism we have. You don't want to get into eminent domain situations immediately. But in the interest of protecting and developing our community responsibly, we have to make sure that blight is addressed. This is a severe problem. It becomes a, it becomes part of a larger public health issue, especially how it relates to crime in certain areas. So we definitely want to make sure that the areas are developing, that our city is beautiful, and we want to do it in a balanced and effective way. So I think code enforcement, increasing fines for those who refuse to participate, and then also at the same time, offering incentives for those who are willing to participate in developing their property.
Okay, we're right on time. Thank you very much. Let's give these folks a hand.